It's 7 o'clock, we'll go ahead and get started. I would like to call the Rockingham County Planning Board in order. May we have an invocation, Mr. Harris?
That is right. Most gracious having followed, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity that we can meet for our September 14th Planning Board meeting. Just be with us tonight as we review the cases being presented to us. Give us the wisdom and judgment to make decisions that be beneficial to requesting parties and also to Rockingham County. We ask these things of your precious name. Amen.
Members, you have a copy of the minutes. Will you please review, and if I can have a motion, please?
Madam Chairman, I may to approve the minutes.
Mr. Wyatt has made a motion to approve. Do you all have a second?
A second.
All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, motion carries. I will review the procedures for the Planning Board. Procedures for public hearings conducted by the Rockingham County Planning Board and Board of Adjustment. Here's the guidelines for speakers. Any and all person who would like to speak regarding any case being heard by the Planning Board must sign a case file roster prior to the beginning of the meeting. For quasi judicial hearings, any and all persons who would like to speak regarding any variance or special use permit case being heard by the Planning Board must also be sworn in by the presiding board member prior to the case hearings. Additionally, each speaker must be recognized by the presiding board member prior to speaking. When recognized, each speaker must approach the podium, state their name and address before speaking unless otherwise specified. All testimony, evidence, and comments should be directed to the board chairperson or presiding board member. The case hearing guidelines, each case will be presented to the board by a member of the planning staff. Following the staff presentation, the case applicant will be given the opportunity to brief the board regarding the case. Following the applicant's presentation, those who have signed up to do so will be granted the opportunity to speak against or in support of a proposal. If needed, the board chairperson reserves the right to set time limits for each speaker. After hearing from the public, the applicant will be given the opportunity for rebuttal. This will be followed by board discussion, motions, and voting procedures. Our first case tonight is... Hold on just a second. Is Special Use Permit Case Number 2020-20, Fairchild. Request for Rural Family Occupation Junk Salvage Yard.
That's not going to happen again.
It's not.
2020-20.
It's not going to happen again, absolutely.
You heard this case at your last meeting and agreed to table the case, continue the case to the next, to tonight's meeting in order to hear more information from the applicant?
No worries.
So, as you remember, it's a request for Rural Family Occupation, a, not to be literally interpreted, junk salvage yard with parts sales at Ellisboro Road in Huntsville Township. This case is intended to bring a code violation into compliance. The code enforcement officer is here at the back of the room this evening, should there be any questions, and he's agreed to answer questions if you have them. He can also give you the most current status of the property. It's located, if you remember, in the Rural Transitional Land Class, accommodating existing residential neighborhoods. It's really the basic, offering continued development but accommodating existing neighborhoods. It's the property location, if you remember. And the site plan, you had this site plan at the last meeting that is on the left side of my screen. The applicant further detailed the storage of where the vehicles, there were a lot of questions about the vehicle storage. He's indicating on the right side there on the screen where the vehicles are to be stored. On the request of the planning staff, the applicant has written a business plan. So this business plan is intended to describe his use, so that you can better understand what he proposes there. And I just would say, a business plan is not a requirement in and of itself. You have some flexibility in asking for conditions, and you could consider making this description of the use a condition of the permit. That is my presentation. Do you have questions for me before you hear from the applicant or other?
Does anybody have any questions for staff?
Just one. Has anything changed since our last meeting from the county's perspective?
He was at the back of the room. Oh, there you go. The question is whether anything with the case has changed since the last Planning Board meeting. Do I assume that you're talking about the way the property is, is being used right now? Do you mind answering that?
No, everything's been at a standstill since y'all been meeting.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, well, just realize that I took that question without swearing. Bryson in, John.
Have you had any comments from neighbors, any letters?
We haven't this time. We did from the first case.
Do we have any folks that would like to speak? And I don't have the sheet... Emily, do we have the sheets?
I'll get it for you.
Mr. Faircloth was sworn in in the original case. Does he need to be sworn in again?
I would say yes.
Okay. Mr. Faircloth, would you put your right hand in the Bible. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matters at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Mr. Faircloth, would you state your name and address, please?
My name is Richard Faircloth. I live at 281 Ellisboro Garden Lane in Madison.
Mr. Faircloth, what would you like to share with us this evening?
Just trying to follow up from the last time. We had a little bit of a misunderstanding as far as what the permit was going to be for. All I can say is just for storage of junk and salvage vehicles, as far as that goes, nothing more. Everything's still the same as last time.
Does anybody have any questions of Mr. Faircloth?
The additional information that you did submit was that to further identify that 600 square feet and their, the business plan. So they hadn't seen that?
It was more to clarify what originally it came to do in the first place. What she showed with two maps, the site plan and the map beside it, was more to give you an idea on what the property's going to look like. My main concern was letting code enforcement and staff come out and take a look, get a better understanding of everything. As far as I know, that was what the plan was.
Carrie, can we look at the, at the business plan? Any questions?
I have a question, Madam Chairman.
Okay.
Mr. Faircloth, to grant this permit, one of the things that we have to find is that your use is operated to maintain or promote the public health, safety, and general welfare. Can you tell us how you're going to operate your business in order to maintain or promote the public health, safety, and general welfare?
On a property, I guess, looking at the property wise, as far as maintaining welfare for everybody else, there's not really going to be anybody bothered by me, I guess you could say, as far as staying away from other houses, noise, pollution, any other kind of disturbances. A benefit, I guess you could say, of what I'm offering is offering a tow service, and a lot of these cars are people that I've towed their cars for, I store them there for them. I don't know how many wrecks I've been on in Rockingham County, helped cleaned up, and I'm very competitive with my prices as opposed to everybody else in Rockingham County. So I think I'm really a benefit to the area with what I offer.
Thank you. I have a question.
Proceed.
Mr. Faircloth, how long would you say if you had to tow a vehicle, how long typically would that vehicle stay on site? Is it one of the permanent things, does it agree, or do they have insurance purposes? Typically, how long?
There's two circumstances which I tow vehicles. Usually I buy it for junk, get it off somebody's property for them, and that usually, depending on what vehicle it is, if it's got a little bit of value to it, it might be there a month at most. If it's towed for a wreck or insurance reasons, it'll be there at most two weeks until the insurance adjuster comes out and they do their thing, and I get a phone call from the auction company or the lien holder to come pick the vehicle up, or they release the vehicle to me, whichever happens first. Another thing I'd add on that is, any vehicle you tow for insurance purposes, under the guidelines of what that would be, you're supposed to have a buffer zone, and they have strict guidelines on that as well. If I will, you know, they're, they're being lenient with me so far because I'm just starting. I don't have the funds to foregravel, fencing, and security, and stuff like that, but they do require fenced-in lot for most protection of their own assets. That's, that part right there would be reassurance to the fact that I have to maintain something nice and organized.
Go ahead, Mr.
Mr. Faircloth, I had a couple of questions I want to ask. I know I looked at this picture, the, this picture here.
Yes, sir.
I came out Friday and looked at that place, the place. Looks like you've got about twice as many vehicles in front of your house as this picture shows.
Yes, I understand.
We could hardly see your house.
I understand. Most of the vehicles are personal use and are registered vehicles. There are some that you'll see that are sitting out that either haven't moved to the back yet or being used, being moved around. Nothing stays permanently up front. For instance, I've got a car that I've been working on myself. I don't know if you've seen it, it's an old blue Plymouth. It's sitting up there. I've been pushing in and out of my building, working on it. There's another friend's vehicle up there, I've been working on here and there with him, and it's in front of the building. It's really, you know, hard for me to take a car out, take it down to the bottom, bring it back up, and so forth. Anything up front usually doesn't stay long.
I understand. You have a pickup truck sitting on the right of your, in front of your house. There's a pickup truck sitting on a trailer.
That was a friend of mine. It's not there now.
Another thing really caught my attention, when you pull up to the front of your property, there was a ton and a half truck sitting there. It looked like it's been there for years.
The gold color?
I don't know. There was a ton and a half trucks sitting there, and then beside of it, looked like it was a working hydraulics that may go on a wreck truck or...
Yes, sir.
Or something.
The gold truck, the rear axle is locked on it, and it's really heavy, hard for me to move. I had it on a trailer and unloaded it, and that's as far as I can move it.
It's been there for a good while, hasn't it?
About three months.
And it was hydraulic?
The wrecker booms, they're the same circumstance, they're hard to move. I'm not sure, you said you came out Friday?
Yeah.
So you seen the white truck sitting there with the wrecker, wrecker bed?
I don't know, I saw so much.
I understand.
But I did see the, I think it was a burgundy pickup on a trailer.
There was a, there was a black one sitting on a trailer.
Well, it might have been. It was hard to drive and look, but...
Yeah, I understand.
I did, like I say, as I pulled up, I saw that truck sitting there, I thought, well, you know, if you have a pretty frequent turnover, the truck looked like it'd been sitting there where grass had grown around it, and looked like it'd been there for a good while.
That's the truck I purchased for, I'm not sure if you've seen, there's a blue truck there, it's a rollback.
No, this was just old, flatbed, ton and a half without a bed on it.
I understand. I bought that truck for parts for one of my trucks I use for work, and that's just where I could move it for the time being. I'm not, I'm either going to cut the truck up, salvage the parts I can for it, scrap the rest, or move it in the back when I can. The only truck I got to move it right now is the one I stated last time, it was broke down, it's still broke down.
It's a hydraulics, been there for pretty long.
About the same amount of time. Actually, not as long as the gold truck, the one in question. I bought those not long ago and planned on building another truck to be able to use for work, and those things are very heavy and hard to move.
Okay, that's all.
I have a question for Carrie. Can you explain a little bit more about why you recommend denial? Thank you, Mr. Faircloth.
We were very concerned about a clear threshold between a rural family occupation and more of a higher intensity, light industry type operation. And applaud this property owner for being creative in what he's doing, and had added, over time, added different uses that he wanted to. So we're trying to really nail down exactly what it is that he wants to use the property for, and I think we're getting there. My other concern was that when I interpreted a, you know, a junk motor vehicle is a vehicle without tags, it isn't working. And there are circumstances when you're allowed to have them if they're, in a, as part of a business like this for outdoor storage within 600 square feet of space, beyond 600 square feet is considered a junkyard, which is allowed only, which is not, would not be allowed in this zoning district with or without a special use permit. So there's a, there's a fine line there, and I was really insecure about recommending without a better description and plan.
And I think we had some discussion, we had a pretty at length discussion about how many cars, how many feet, how many cars could fit in that, that's, I believe it was 25 square foot. We had, we had said something, I remember discussion about 25.
The 600 square foot area that...
Yeah.
Yeah.
You couldn't get that many cars within...
Right.
You couldn't get a...
So, and I think the way this, the way the property is right now, it's exceeding what would be allowed under this ask, under this request. So you have a variety of options to give him the opportunity to put the, to, if you approve the permit, and he's got to get into compliance with the permit that you've granted. I mean, that's a benefit of the doubt sort of thing. He's talking about the expense of fencing and so forth, and I don't, I do understand why he'd want to wait to be sure he could actually do the work. And so it would be an enforcement issue, but it would be something that would be conditioned upon a future visit perhaps. And the other thing, like I said, is to be, to tie as much of what he's submitted to the permit itself as possible, so that if he goes beyond that threshold, it will be easier for us to enforce and to help him understand that it would be a different ask. But now you've become something different than what we've granted.
Okay. Is there any discussion from the members?
Yes, I do. I'm just, so, we considered before, wasn't it a residential, commercial, residential business situation?
He's living on the property.
But now, is it not different?
He's still living on the property.
But he's asking for a different...
The uses have been more clearly defined, and he's asking for a permit, a special use permit, which is allowed in that residential zoning district to operate a commercial business off, out of your home property.
Did you say there were comments received outside?
And I believe that the case came to our attention through complaints from the neighbors.
So have we had any communication from the neighbors or anyone else about this?
I don't believe we have since the first, no, since that first, since it was brought to our attention and we identified the...
Okay.
This is just my thought. This is an individual that's trying to make a living on his own property. I understand the neighbors, that this is a dead end dirt road, is that right, Mr. Harris? Very rural.
Versus including.
You're right. I'm just thinking out loud, if he could put all the junk cars behind his residence and the building where it's not up on the road, I think that would be a, something that would work for the neighbors, because they can't see it from the side. I don't know if we can enforce that or if...
Yeah, can we stipulate that?
Where he's going to put the vehicles, just so y'all understand, in the bottom corner where he had it outlined, that's a slope downhill. He cannot see it from the road at all. Isn't that correct?
So you see the green outline area?
Yeah, we established that.
From the main road, Ellisboro Garden, you can't see any of that from the roadway.
If we can enforce that.
That's the idea, and I, and I know Bryson, being here and being familiar with the case, would be, so we'd be doing it hand in hand.
And right now, all the vehicles that you're storing are there except for, I think it was six junk vehicles up front.
Those, those were going out to the block, I should put those in the back.
And you're in the process of putting those in the back.
If I remember correctly, go ahead.
Is that box, is that the 600 square feet?
No, that's not 600 square feet. 600 square feet is equal to about four cars.
I was going to say, it's a 30 by 20, so that's my size garage.
Which is, exactly, which is why you'd be, you'd be granting this permit with a very specific condition, that you're allowing a greater area than that without calling it a junkyard.
Junkyard. If I remember correctly, during our last discussion about this, the, we were talking about 25 cars and, or 25 vehicles, and that has, looking at the business plan, that has decreased to 15 vehicles. Do we have any idea how many square feet 15 vehicles would take?
You can get a rough estimate, four of each, it was, it's equal to roughly 600 square feet. So, it all depends on the size of the vehicle mainly.
Three times that, maybe?
Right.
Three or four times that. And I think that what this would be, this permit with this amount of detail, would be that they have to be contained within this area. I think there's 16 on the property right now.
There's 17 in the rear, exactly. Just outlining that, so they can all be easily accessed and moved out when the time comes.
I would recommend against numbers as a threshold, but more a contained area within the site.
Because there's a much deeper tract than what it's showing.
It's very difficult to enforce numbers, and often unfair, just as things come and go.
So you don't recommend limiting the square feet? What about the number of vehicles?
I do, just the opposite, actually. I recommend limiting the square footage to what's shown on the plan.
And not the...
And not the number.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Which is roughly 2,400 square feet, right?
I think what was, what is that area that you've outlined?
I didn't measure that spot, I'm sort of lost it all, I had your angle right, so I got about 2,500 square feet.
Yes, 2,500. You're going to, are you going to close this with a fence?
Yes, I will eventually. I just have to get, fence is very expensive.
So we can, we can follow that up with enforcing a specific area that's equal to this?
I have one question also.
30 by 30.
Didn't you also say last meeting that you have some fencing that you acquire through other means that you could use?
It's a sound barrier off...
Sound barrier, right.
220 going through Somerville Field. Styrofoam 20 by 4, they're 20 foot long, 4 foot tall. Two people are going to handle them. I was given, I was just going to use them for like a building of some sort, a lean to, they work, in my opinion, great for fencing. The only place I think I really need them is the border, as you can see on the...
Upper hand.
Picture, the red line. That's the only place anybody besides the people on my property can see cars, if they would, my neighbor's house.
It actually would be your call to decide if that type of barrier would be appropriate for the area versus the fence, and whether it would still help protect surrounding properties and your, the welfare of the neighbors. I'm a little unsure about that.
I got one quick question. How do you determine the difference between a personal use vehicle and the business part of the junk?
It would be by the site plan. It would be by the site plan. It's that there are, there may be personal vehicles outside this area, that they would be treated as either active vehicles or junked motor vehicles, and we would treat them as we would any other vehicles in a property. It's going to have to be about the area defined for...
So really, the issue is more of the junk vehicles, untagged vehicles in the road?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there any further discussion?
No, I have a question for Carrie. Carrie, on this printout here, one of the locations shows Ellisboro Garden Lane. The other one shows Old Home Place. What's that?
Old Home Place is a private, let's see.
It is.
Yeah, it's a private road that just goes to the end of the, I think Old Home Place goes to the dead end, is that right?
They've got three, they've got three roads next to them.
Yeah.
There's two, that's my friend's house, that's actually out.
Does Old Home Place come off of Eden, Ellisboro Garden?
Not in Jerk Road. It's about three driveways from...
Okay.
Or just completely separate.
Okay, all right, thank you.
It's up, uh, there to the north. I see what you're, I see, yeah.
Let me explain.
This property isn't accessed from Old Home Place. Access from Ellisboro.
Carrie, what's happening right in front of Ellisboro Garden?
This area, the...
The large track.
I don't know.
Go up to your question.
Yeah. You're talking about this property here?
It blends into it. Someone, someone has gone out, forgot his last name. You can access that Old Home Place on Eden Jerk Road, and you go towards, it would be Pedroon on the right, it goes into Eden Jerk Road. That's where he gets his access, well, I believe that's where he comes in at. And he bought the property from the owner of the property on Old Home Place. He just bought it to own property. I spoke to him too.
I'm not able to answer, but I think you need to take Mr. Faircloth's word.
Any other comments, questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, make a motion that we approve a special use permit based on the following standards as required by the Rockingham County UDO in North Carolina General Statute 153A-341 and 153A-342. After considering Rockingham County adopted comprehensive plans in the UDO, the planning board approves 2020-20. This action is consistent with the adopted Rockingham County land use plan, that the use and development is located, designed, and proposed to be operated as to maintain and promote the public health, safety, and general welfare, that the use and development complies with all required regulations and standards of this ordinance, and with applicable rec, uh, excuse me, regulations, that the use or development is located, designed, and proposed to be operated so as to maintain or enhance the value of contentious property, or that the use or development is in public necessity, and that the use of development conforms with the general plans for the land use and development in Rockingham County as embodied in this chapter and in the Rockingham County UDO. Additional comments, that the applicant would maintain no more than 2,500 square feet of storage and provide a barrier to the east.
Is there a second?
Would you mind adding this, the submitted site plan and use description as a condition, if you don't mind me iterating the?
Yes.
And that's just to include, following the site plan.
To include the site plan?
Yeah, following, following the site plan.
So just to clarify this, I motion to approve a 2,500 square foot use with the, with the border fence.
Or barrier, yeah, any, if, if he wants to use the styrofoam barrier, that's.
The four foot, sufficient, I mean, in the, given the motion.
I would think so, with the kind of elevation.
Unless you wanna amend it to increase.
I'll second that.
Okay. Philip seconds it. Those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed, motion carries.
So this, this board's decision is, is final, so, well, you probably should meet and just, just talk about, I'll come out to the site and make sure that the area is identified and that we have next steps if it's, it would be requesting another amendment if you need to expand the area, but by that time, it will have been more established.
Our next case is a special use permit case number 2020-24, Clayton Homes, request for double wide manufactured home in residential protected district. Carrie, would you like to present, please?
So, case 2020-24, special use permit for a double wide manufactured home in the RP zoning district, and if you remember that double wide homes are allowed in the RA district and with a special use permit in the residential protected district. This applicant is the home manufacturer or sales and distributor. I don't know if they're here or not, she was unable to be here, but I think there is a representative, thank you. Same land class that we just looked at, accommodating existing neighborhoods, balancing the need for rural char, to balance, retain rural character with a strong demand for continued development. This is a map that shows you the existing mobile homes in the area, based on the records that were available from the tax office. You see there are a, a number of existing homes in the area. And the parcel, the reason this is a portion, you're rezoning it, or their special use permit for a portion of the parcel, this parcel actually goes across the road, so this would be, this permit would be just for the portion, portion of the parcel that you see here. That was a tough, that was a mouthful. This is the, the site plan proposed for the location of the home on the site. This is just a typical site plan that was created for a health permit, to make sure that the property was, so else would take exception. If you have questions, do you have questions for me?
Anybody?
And no, no word at all that you would have shared, right, that we didn't get anything from neighbors, yeah, from anyone that was notified or otherwise, we didn't hear from anybody.
How much acreage is in that section?
I think we're talking about. Oh, no, we didn't identify. It's about two acres, the entire parcel is 10.
But it's just one row.
So, and, and I'm kinda cheating, because this gentleman just said 1.8.
Any opposition?
There has not been, that, that we have been made aware of. I guess the important thing about acreage would be that it is a conforming lot to the surrounding neighborhood and to the district. I can only, I can only guess, Philip. It's a, it must have been subdivided close to the same time. It could very well be that it was subdivided as a major, more than five lots, and had to be rezoned in order for that to happen.
And there are a number of manufactured housing units within proximity of this property, correct?
That's correct, the, the green.
The green dots. Any further questions from staff? Daniel Leonard, would you like to speak?
Yo, I'm good.
Does anybody want to add some questions, or?
I'm ready to make a motion, Madam Chair.
Uh, proceed.
After considering Rockingham County adopted comprehensive plans in UDO, the planning board approves 2020-23, this action is consistent with the adopted Rockingham County land use plan. After review of competent material and substantial evidence in the record, the board makes the following findings for the four conclusions necessary to approve a special use permit, that the use or development is located, designed, and proposed to be operated so as to maintain and or promote the public health, safety, and general welfare, that the use or development complies with all required regulations and standards of this ordinance, and with all applicable regulations, that the use or development is located, designed, and proposed to be operated so as to maintain or enhance the value of contiguous property, or that the use or development is a public necessity, and the board finds that the use or development conforms with the general plans of the land use and development of Rockingham County, as embodied in the chapter and in the Rockingham County UDO.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, motion carries. The next item of business on our agenda is the training, planning board training by the Piedmont Triad Regional Council.
Oh, I should have mentioned before, Paul is not well right now. He's suffering from an infection after complications, I suppose, from the kidney stone issue that he had before. Say a prayer for him, think about him, maybe even give him a call, because he was, he sounded like he was in really rough shape, and I don't think that he's, it seems like the kinda guy, probably has a high pain threshold, so he was, he was really having a hard time. So that is why, I should have said that before, that's why we have Julie here cheering the board. This is Jesse Day. I'll let him introduce himself, he comes from the Piedmont Triad Regional Planning Council. We have a contract with this organization for, for yearly services that they give us, as well as we contract on occasion for special individual services that they can help us with.
Okay, good evening. I should have brought coffee and ice cream.
Seriously.
But I regret even saying that, because now you're, now you're thinking of coffee and ice cream. My name's Jesse Day, and I'm the planning director, as Carrie said, with the Piedmont Triad Regional Council in Rockingham County, as a member of our agency. I also have my colleague David Putnam, who is our community and strategic initiatives planner here, to be a part of the training here tonight. So I wanted to try to keep it a little less formal, it's hard to do that in the county commissioner's meeting room, but I'd like to kinda have an open conversation with you. I know it's the first time seeing the agenda and the PowerPoint, but it's pretty straightforward, and we'll walk through it together. If I am going too fast, or we need to pause, please just feel free to interrupt me and ask some questions. So, I pass out an agenda just to kinda keep us on task, I thought we'd start a little bit earlier, I wasn't aware of the, the two cases tonight, so we'll still try to wrap up around 8:15 if we can, but with your permission, we'll try to get through, through this agenda and through the presentation tonight. So do we have any questions before we get started? Okay. Just to start off, there we go, learning the mouse here, so there's our agenda. So we'll walk through, kinda why are you on the planning board, just real briefly, give me a chance to kinda get your perspective. I know, you know, I know Philip, I've talked to him about trails before, and so, and then we'll talk about your roles and responsibilities, just basic, kinda the enabling statutes, some changes that are going on with the general assembly, and their changes of combining the municipal and the county code, I'll just briefly overview that. Also, we'll talk a little bit about public hearing process, I mean, you guys are well aware of the quasi digital legislative process, but we'll just kinda break that down a little bit, and then talk about some different scenarios with those two types of decisions that you make. And then we can not do meeting minutes, I don't know why we have that up there. I think that's just a reminder to document your meetings, then wrap up and critique and go over any questions.
I'll bet that was on there from Paul's.
From?
I bet, I bet it was.
I'm sorry that I, there were a couple of alternate, did everybody get a copy of the presentation?
So there's, there's three copies up here, if you're welcome to come up and grab them, so if you wanna copy the agenda and the presentation.
Thank you, yeah, we've got some fairly newly seated alternates that are here.
Oh, great.
I haven't seen a lot of this, I've been watching the, the casework, but.
Good, and thank you for handing those out.
Yeah.
So just, just basic, you know, local government's a creature of the state, so you have, you know, enabling statutes, zoning has not been around for a long time, well, depends on your perspective with counties, it's a longer term with, with municipalities, that's one of the reasons why you have two different chapters of enabling statutes for county zoning and municipal zoning, and last year, they finally merged those together, because it's basically the same thing. And so, that enabling legislation allows for zoning enforcement, subdivision enforcement, of course, the housing and building code, which is something you deal with less, that's sort of just pretty standard, I mean, you're either following the code or you're not following the code, that sort of thing, whereas you have more of a, kind of interpretive decision making, using your best judgment on what's going on in the real world, and what, what local landowners wanna do as land use changes. Of course, you have the, counties have the general health, safety, and police power, it gets a little squishy, I know you probably don't have to deal with it as much on your end, but you know, that extraterritorial jurisdiction area is always complicated with the municipal and county role in terms of land use and zoning enforcement for those areas. It's typically more of a problem on the, on the municipal side, because they're trying to enforce zoning, and the folks think they're living in the county, which they are, but, you know, the zoning's responsible in municipality, but we won't get into that tonight, because you don't have to deal with extraterritorial jurisdiction, and of course, you're bound by just basic constitutional values of being treated equally, equally protected under law, and so that's, that's kind of just the basic premise I wanted to start off with. You'll notice down there is the enabling statutes, 153A, that will expire in January, upcoming year, you've got until, until July, there's a grace period of six months to, to go ahead and incorporate the new 160D changes, which are those merged statutes. Now, what is 160D, probably heard about that? Have you guys, any of you watched any of the videos on 160D and changes there? Carrie said some of you were watching videos on that. No, maybe not, and somebody else, okay.
I lied. Paul went over it a little bit, they understand the gravity of the law and how, how intense it is, and how much, how it's a, an overall change to the entire statute, but no, they haven't, they haven't done the video.
Well, not, I mean, there's a lot in there, but, so there's a lot of changes, of a lot about process, like just kind of codifying the process, obviously merging those two chapters, so it's, I mean, from the private side, it's really helpful, because you have one, you know, one set of general statutes to, that you know, the, either the county or the municipality's gonna abide by. About public notice, you know, if you're doing a land development plan update, you have to do a public notice now. Now, conditional use permits, so you guys do a lot of special use permits, so that's preserved, but places that I've worked with, use a lot of conditional use permits, so those are, those are changing to basically straight up legislative rezonings for conditional zoning. There's also a lot of stuff around form-based code, manufactured housing, not being able to say you can't have a manufactured home of a certain age, historic districts, vested rights, and development agreements. But before we get too far along, I wanted to pause and do the, the why are you on the planning board question, and so I'll just start with whoever wants to start first, and we can go, colloquialize from there, okay? I guess the chair pointed you out, Tim.
I don't know if I remember why I originally went to planning board. I just generally have a professional interest in development of the county.
Okay, so you're in develop, land development?
I'm a construction lawyer.
Okay, great, yeah, thanks for sharing that.
Ms. Harris.
Oh, also developing the county, and also make sure that, I'm gonna stick to rules and regulations, and I believe in complying, and never actually being compliance, but whatever is documented in the county is a rule of law regulation.
Okay, great, thanks for sharing that.
I'm a native, and I am here to serve the citizens of Rockingham County. It's all about public service to me.
Oh, good, okay, great, thank you.
My biggest reason is, it's like the involvement piece in the growth of the county.
Mm-hmm, having a role in that, yeah, yeah, great, thanks, James.
Again, to be involved with county government.
Okay. What you thought?
Well, and my business correlates, you know, quite a bit, so, in the real estate business, so to learn more about how the process works, and the ins and outs, and standards, and that kinda thing.
Okay, great, and the alternates in the group? Did you guys wanna offer why you, I, I, yeah, just give me an opportunity.
Mandatory participation.
Just to be able to contribute to the growth of the future.
It's an opportunity to serve, to serve the county, and growth and development is how the county progresses and becomes a better place to live, and doing it within the, within the law, within the codes, is what's really important for us.
Yeah, well, that's great. Yeah, well, that's great.
We've got one more back there.
Okay, sorry.
Well, that's great. You guys have a lot of common interests, so I think that's good to build off of. I mean, because you can't act as an individual on a board, right? You need to work together. I mean, that's, that's kind of how, how, you know, government boards work, so, and boards in general. So, great. Thanks for sharing that. That's very helpful for me in context going forward. So anything you want to unpack from 160D and just like a question you wanted to ask about 160D and the changes. So I mentioned, so you've got till July 1 of next year, and I know you're going through an ordinance rewrite right now. So there's a lot of new stuff coming, plus the 160D changes. So that's going to be a new operating manual for you guys over the, over the coming month, so.
Can you clarify on the removes conditional use permits section there?
Yeah, so conditional use permits will convert to conditional zoning. So you could have a business, you know, it's a general business zoning district that used to have a conditional use permit, go through a quasi judicial process to maybe have a, you know, maybe a automobile repair and junkyard that used to be a conditional use permit process. So that will then convert to conditional zoning. So it would be a legislative zoning. You can meet with the applicant outside of the hearing. The applicant could have a public meeting. So in the ordinance, it would say, well, the automobile repair place with a junkyard would be a conditional zoning requirement. So in essence, it would still say like, it would, instead of saying CU, it'd say CZ. And so the process for going forward would be much more straightforward for the applicant and for the board. But once that's established, that's a particular zoning for that, that business. So if the neighbor says, well, I want to, I want to be that, they would have to go through the same conditional zoning process, offer up conditions, maybe a look at the building, hours, that sort of thing. That would kind of satisfy those conditions that are agreed upon both by the planning board or the decision board. It could be the governing board in some cases. Yeah, actually, it would be the, ultimately it would be the governing board now because it would be a recommendation to the governing board or board of commissioners.
So the county board denied it would have been a special use permit or it would have been a special use.
Well, you know, so special use permits will stay. So you guys will, that, that's, that's still staying. So, but if you happen to have, you know, I'm sorry to bring up Walnacup, but they have a lot of conditional use permits. And so those are all converted and conditional zoning as an example. And so some communities will, will have a more legislative process going forward.
So that may be where the confusion may lie because the conditional use permit has always been known to be synonymous with special use permit.
Right, yeah, because you're having that back and forth in a, in a hearing setting and, and conditions are offered, they're agreed upon or they're not agreed upon, both in a special use as well as a conditional use permit example. So it really, it's, it makes it much clearer process for the public and it makes it easier. I think it's going to make your job easier, honestly, going forward. Do you, do you have any conditional use permits?
We don't. We don't have any conditional use permits. We have quite a few special use permits. And you're going to get to see the ordinance, by the way, beginning of October. We're going to be presenting it to the Board of Commissioners and I'll invite you, don't let me forget to come back around to that in other business, but.
Yeah, and I have it on the agenda.
Okay, oh, good. Yeah, that's right.
If it's still the right date, so.
So we may be converting a lot of those special use permits to, we're going to look at that, look at that. Are there some special use permits that we want to convert to conditional zoning? Or do we want to leave them as they are?
Any other kind of questions about 160D process going forward?
One, one other question that has to be posed now, consideration with the special use permits. They can still impose certain conditions on those, unique conditions on special use permits?
Yes, and so those would have to be agreed to in writing by the applicant, which is maybe a little bit different than today where it's, you know, the, the board makes a decision and they write down those conditions. The applicant will actually have to agree to those conditions, both in a conditional zoning as well as a special use permit hearing, which, which would be interesting to see how, you know, how do you, I guess you have to follow up pretty soon after the hearing with that in writing and get them to agree to, to that. So that's just an, that'll be an extra probably step, a record-keeping step that you have to think about going forward. Yeah, good question. Okay, plug along here. So just kind of talking about your role as, as planning board. And we'll talk a little bit about board of adjustment as well. But now the county commission acts as a board of adjustment?
No, these, this board does, actually.
Yeah, good, all right. So that'll, that'll transfer pretty well in terms of what I've got laid out here. But essentially, I mean, you guys are, you know, appointed, you're there to help administer the development ordinances, but you also have a broader charge of kind of studying, like, a lot of the comments about why you're on the planning board is concerned about growth. And, you know, we talk about land development plans. That's one thing that 160D now requires. If you're going to have zoning, you need an updated land development plan, reasonably updated land development plan. There's, there's several localities that haven't done a plan since the 1970s and that's probably not reasonably updated. But, you know, they're, a lot of states will really mandate, well, you need to do one every five years. But, you know, I mean, some towns don't grow very fast. Like Stoneville is not a real fast-growing town. They don't, not need it every five years. So that's, so you have some flexibility the General Assembly has, has given in terms of how often you, you need to update that. But that's a, you know, studies like that, small area plans, other, other kind of, you know, you've got really kind of fast-growing areas of the county that probably could have some more attention from the land development planning side. And I know you guys, not you guys, but I mean, the county commission has taken the, the choice to go ahead and study those. So that's, that's good and, you know, having some input on that as a, as a charge that the planning board should, should play into. Of course, reviewing development proposals and then you can have other duties that are directed by the county commission as well. Of course, just talking about decisions and what kind of decisions you make. You'll see there's administrative decisions, subdivisions and site plans. You know, some communities will have the staff make those decisions on subdivisions. Maybe the minor and major will be staff-driven or the major will be kicked up to the planning board in terms of anything like that.
And in our case, the staff decides on all subdivisions with a TRC review, Technical Committee Review.
Good. And then you have, of course, your, your rezoning requests, which will now include conditional zoning, if that's built into the, the new ordinance. You could have some, some sort of feels like a conditional, you see a quasi judicial hearing, but it's going to be a legislative hearing for those if you do decide to do conditional zoning. And so we'll talk a little bit about, about the process for legislative decision-making. Of course, we just conducted quasi judicial hearing. Really, it's like a court hearing, swearing in, offering evidence, making a decision based on the evidence in that hearing. And we'll walk through that in a little bit. And then variances, are, are those decided by you all or by the kind of commission? Yeah, so you probably don't have those as much, but that's also conducted as a quasi judicial. And then I spoke about the advisory and that's kind of the, the planning side of things, looking deep into the future and what the future will be like and, and weighing in on that. And so, you know, just, I'm sorry, this, this text is probably a little hard to read, but it just, just kind of contrasting the kind of, the decisions you guys make, you know, talking about long-range comprehensive planning, you know, it doesn't have a really direct effect on an individual. So what we just went through has a really profound effect on those individuals and, you know, trying to weigh that balance with the long-term goals of the, the county that's been laid out in a plan. And here we are talking about, you know, someone's personal property. So it just, I mean, you have a, I guess that's just an acknowledgement, that's some difficult decisions that you all have to make and, and different types of decisions. And so how you approach that, obviously, you have to kind of, kind of come at it from different angles, if that makes sense. So the factors to consider in rezoning requests are different, obviously, than quasi judicial. But just, you know, there's a couple, two basic types of, of rezonings. You've got the zoning district where someone, an applicant or even, you know, maybe the county commission has decided this area, you know, needs to be rezoned to industrial. So they've initiated the rezoning. So those are two parties that can really initiate, the landowner and the, and the county commission. That's another change with 160D. There's some, some changes in terms of who can initiate rezonings. So a third party can't initiate a rezoning that is going to reduce the amount of uses that are available. So that's, that's something that'll change when 160D is in place. But, you know, it's individual land zoning district change, or there's just the general ordinance provisions. Well, we're, we're changing this text on, you know, page 54 about, you know, public notice. We want, you know, three signs instead of one sign on the property or something like that. That would be an example of a text amendment. And so the notice for that is, is slightly different. I mean, so for the text amendment, you're just going to do a, a general notice out in circulation. You don't have to mail to everybody in the county, but with the, obviously with the land changes, you, you got to mail to the neighbors and also across any transportation corridor. So if you're on, you know, other side of 220 and there's rezoning on the, the east side of 220, you need to notify the property owners on the west side of 220 now. It wasn't as clear in the, in the previous 153A, but going forward, 160D says you've got to go across all, all transportation.
For anything other than collector's streets, we're talking about major highways?
Yeah, or railroads. Well, yeah, railroads. I guess even, you may even want to, if it's a river, you may want to go across a river too, just to, because someone could argue that's a transportation corridor.
Is it a certain distance radius or?
It's just adjacent. Yeah, yeah, it's contiguous.
But now they're sending crossover.
But I guess the transportation corridor, yeah, so you got to go over that to those, those parcels that would be directly abutting across that transportation corridor. So that's something to keep in mind with public notice going forward.
A decision for commissioners because their, our ordinance currently goes to everybody within a thousand-foot radius of the property.
You're going above and beyond, yeah.
So whether we interpret the thousand-foot radius also to be properties across the street.
Well, you probably, yeah, I mean, you're probably.
Or just can settle with the adjacent.
Yeah, yeah, so I think you're definitely, you're going above and beyond what the general statutes require. So you're, you're, you're welcome to do that with public notice. So that's, that's perfectly within the bounds of, of local government. Yeah, so these are kind of the, the steps that you go through in, in evaluating a rezoning request. Are any of these surprises? I mean, you've probably seen these. You've got to do the, I mean, honestly, your, your motion list is, is very thorough. That's good. I would definitely say I've been in some local government meetings where that, where that motion is, is much more simple. So I, I think you're doing your due diligence there with covering and hitting all these, these, these types of things. Obviously, with a rezoning is a little bit different than, than the, than the findings of fact that you just went through for the, for the special use permit. But, you know, it's, it's similar. And so you just need to, you know, make sure that you are looking at the original ordinance, how it was written, and not kind of, well, saying, well, we've done, been doing, you know, we've been doing it this way, you know. So it's just, it's, it's something you got to kind of come back to the ordinance and say, what does that enable? Rather than, you know, interpreting it too, too much, if that makes, does that make sense? Yeah. So that's, that's one thing with legislative processes, it's kind of sticking to that and not getting creative with, with what's in the rezoning, or what's in the ordinance.
It gets especially relevant when your surrounding properties might be grandfathered to something that is not the desired.
Yeah, and that's where, I mean, it's tough. I mean, that's really hard, I mean, hard to do, right? Because, you know, again, zoning hasn't been around forever. And so you have a lot of uses that are, like Carrie said, grandfathered in or non-conforming uses. And, yeah, so how do you, how do you deal with that? Yeah, and so this is just the, the last slide kind of rewritten. And as you know, variances require that super majority. Quasi judicial is just a simple majority. There were some changes in that in the last five years or so. Let some other, you know, things to consider, and we'll, we'll do a test case here. I think I've got one coming up here with a rezoning after we do conduct of meetings. Is the, consistent with the land development plan, what happens if it's not? Is the change warranted? Does it meet a public service need that is there? Is it a growing area? That sort of thing are, are things that you talk about. And especially if you don't have an updated land development plan, and it makes that, those questions that much more important, but subjective potentially if you don't have that, that guidance document that's updated. Right, so just kind of conduct of planning board meetings as a reminder. You know, you always want to study materials before the meetings, start and end meetings on time. That's very difficult if you have, you know, especially during kind of a quasi judicial hearing because you can't really limit the public input. So, but, you know, this is more probably for, say, you're doing a public workshop on the land development plan or you're having kind of an informal workshop on maybe the, the UDO. You know, thinking about starting and ending meetings on time is respectful of, of folks' time who've come out to, to meet. Maybe not, not as important here in COVID since there's not as many meetings. And it's all on Zoom and you can go get a snack and bring your daughter to, to watch the meeting. I don't know, whatever may happen there. But you want to always create places on the agenda for public input. I mean, you know, if public makes an effort to come out there, you know, you, you want to, you want to do that. Try not to limit it to a specific amount of time, if possible. And the best, better way to limit that is if someone starts to repeat the same thing, it's like, we've heard that, right? So, you know, as chair, I mean, it's really the chair's role is to, to interject and say, well, I appreciate that comment, Mr. John Smith, but, you know, that's, that's been said several times. Does anybody have anything material to offer related to the case we're hearing or something like that? Yeah, and so I think the other stuff's pretty straightforward, just kind of, you know, sticking to the, to the, to the values at hand. You know, because this kind of, this next one's really, if, if kind of hearsay starts to creep into the hearing, you come back and say, wait, what are we talking about? This, like this, we're talking about some business here and you're just talking about how you don't like this person. And it's, it's not helpful, doesn't, it just, it really changes the tenor of the meeting. And unfortunately, that does fall in the chair's role to kind of bring that back in. But that's, that's really helpful, I think, to others in the audience that, that maybe are, are wanting to actually talk about the facts and not hearsay.
So what if your chair gets into the mission creep kind of thing?
Well, enable your fellow board members to give you a signal.
Or the attorney.
That you're, you're getting off, off track. And so, yeah, I mean, that's, that's hard, right? Because that's, I mean, you're wearing the chair hat and you get kind of caught up in the motion of, of things and, and whatnot. So just, I mean, keep asking yourself that. Is this really pertinent to the case we're hearing? Is this allowed in terms of what I'm, what I'm talking about, so.
I'll commend staff for doing a great job.
Good to, to, to address because it's good for, for me to know, you know, that you were inviting, that anyone is inviting that feedback. Because I don't want to take the board over, but the fact that you're asking for that guidance is awesome.
Yeah, and it's, sometimes we can, it, it's easy to not really see, sort of, particularly somebody that's not black and white like me. Everything's gray area. It's, you know, we can, want to just consider everything, but, yeah. So it's, this staff has been phenomenal.
Well, but again, I think just to add on the hearsay. Now, you know, my position is that hearsay rule, evidence shall, it can be, can be allowed if it's relevant. But since it's hearsay, the board has to determine how much credibility to give it. It could give it very low credibility or rely on it very little since it's hearsay, so.
And that's good because it would be John or my job to say, by the way, what you, that was, that was hearsay. And you guys have, have stopped to ask, can we consider this? Is this, is this right to consider? And, and we've been able to guide you there, so it's good.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's difficult. I mean, in the moment, it's very difficult to kind of take, step out and, and do that. But yeah, I mean, it's, you don't know it's hearsay immediately, right? So you can't just kind of say, well, you can't say that, so, but it may come out as the, as the hearing goes on, so. Yeah, so, and then I'm probably less so for, for kind of a public hearing, but if you're doing kind of a, a business meeting, a meeting about a land development plan or a study, you know, just kind of talking about those decisions at the end of the meeting. And I'm running way behind, so I, I don't know what I've got for, for kind of a, a hard stop for time. But I'm not going to make it through this presentation by 8:15, so.
Jesse's being sensitive to your needs when he's, when he's talking about that. I just want to make sure.
Yeah, I'm happy to stay as long as possible.
I say we either try to get through it as quickly as we can, probably about 8:30 because.
8:30, let's do a hard stop at 8:30 and, and I'll get as far as I can. Eight thirty, let's do a hard stop at 8:30, and I'll get as far as I can.
We fade by then.
Before then.
No, we, seriously, we fade by then.
I hear you. Yeah, and so just another kind of, just kind of capping, it's kind of the issues for conducting meetings. And this is, this is, you know, really for both public hearings and just general public meetings, having established procedures. Public hearing is easy. I think the, the public meetings are interesting. If you're going to do conditional zoning, there's an opportunity for public meeting that the applicant can go ahead and do. That's not something like this. It doesn't have to be in the Board of Commissioners' meeting room. It could be out in the community. So that might be an opportunity to think about, how do you set that up in a way that people feel included? And that's where you can get some of those conditions worked out. We'll want brick on the Dollar General, or, you know, I want, you know, you know, some extra screening. And, and that's where it, you know, the, the applicant can hear what the community needs in terms of maybe conditions. And then it kind of be worked out ahead of kind of the decision point where the planning board makes a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners.
I have a really quick question about that. You've piqued my interest. It seems like to me that there have been a couple of times where the community showed up, and they showed up not to voice opposition. They showed up because they just didn't have enough information. Is this the right vehicle? For example, we heard a case out on Ellisburg Road, Duke Energy was out there, and so many people showed up. And the fact that neither had spoken to one another, and I walked up to Montgomery, what's his last name?
Yeah, Davis.
Yeah, Montgomery, I walked up to him, and I said, have you presented to these people? Did you like rent a room at the Marina and present? And he said, no. And I said, well, why didn't you do that? And so the, the residents were actually standing there talking to him. So is this the, the right place to do some of that type of work?
It actually is, that's, that's just what Jesse's talking about.
Yeah, and the conditional zoning is a vehicle for that. Unfortunately, if you're going to do a lot of special use permits, you're still going to be constrained by basing your decision on what you gather from the staff report in the hearing, what you gather from the applicant, and those opposed to the case in the hearing. So it's not going to work for everything, but it could work for bigger rezoning requests that maybe fall under that conditional zoning. So you have some more tools to be a little bit more flexible in terms of how you get to kind of that final plan for development, whether it's commercial or resident, or multifamily or residential or something like that. Now, single family and duplex will still be exempted from any sorts of conditions going forward. Let's see. So, yeah, so just depending on, you know, contact with applicants depends on whether it's a rezoning or a quasi judicial hearing. You got to expose your conflict of interests, or state your conflicts of interest before voting on a case. Obviously, open meetings law, if Phillip's meeting with Mike and, and Timothy before the meeting, that's a, you know, it's a technically an open meeting, and you need to do some, some public notice for that. Probably more of a scrutiny for the governing board, the final decision-making body than, than the planning board, but something to keep in mind. And then how do you, how do you handle conflict going forward here? Well, I've got a, a little pause, and we'll just look at this case real quick on a rezoning request. And I'm just curious what you guys think of this. So take a minute to read through this. I'll read it out loud, or you can read it at your pleasure. "Your board is considering a rezoning request. At the hearing, you become convinced that the proposed project would be harmful to the community as a bad idea. A neighbor speaks at the hearing states the property will reduce his property values and endanger his children. However, the proposal seems to meet all the goals in the comprehensive plan. Can the board properly recommend denial of the request?"
We did so about a month ago.
Carrie didn't, she didn't, she didn't tell me about anything.
No, we did.
I didn't. I was waiting, and I said, they're, they're going to bring up. And Jesse said, don't do that to me. I want to be a whole other thing at a time. So what were you, what were you thinking about the Dollar General?
Yep. Yep. It, it was Dollar General. They, they followed the UDO, they, everything was right, and they had site, of course, they're going to do everything ultra professionally. And they brought their attorney in here and their planner, and their, they had, they came with their experts, and they were slick.
Yeah.
And they did it all right. But we decided that it wasn't the best.
Had some concern from the community, yeah.
It was not the best, it, it would not serve the community well.
Uh huh, right.
So we denied it. So I guess, yes, we can. Well, the question is properly. Oh.
I know, I've shared, I've struggled with that several different times with several cases.
Uh huh.
This exact situation.
Yeah. So.
The hard thing is that you've got to keep in mind, it's their property, so you want to err on the side of doing all you can to benefit them as opposed to, and full disclosure, I work for Altria, so it makes it interesting.
And you would have recused yourself.
Yeah, you had to recuse yourself, right, right?
I did, yeah.
Yeah. So I, but you're, you're perfectly, and you're, as a board, able to, to do that if you find evidence that maybe it's inconsistent, or the land, the land use plan's inconsistent with, with kind of the, well, even though that was maybe consistent with the land development plan, you had information that said it was not needed or not appropriate. And so you're well within your, your balance. This is a sort of a trick question, because it's kind of, you can go either way, but you have that flexibility.
Interestingly, the vote was 3-4.
Oh, it was a split vote, yeah, yeah, real close. Okay.
And that's where the properly part is where I always strongly recommend to the board that I work with that you have a reason, a good reason.
Right. And you, I mean, I'm sure that was in the motion. There's a reason in the motion to deny progress, even though it was consistent with the land use plan. So, yeah. So, then you, you need to do that if you're, if you're, you know, you need to also have the statement that it's either consistent or inconsistent with land use plan and, and how you're going with a rezoning. Good, well, thanks.
We did that.
So, yeah, so we've been, you've been through that before. It's, it's not easy. It's not easy. Skip over this one. We've talked about that. So conditional zoning. Now, you guys don't have this, I won't spend a lot of time on it, but I think it's.
We do, we've done some.
You do have conditional zoning?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we have, it's, it's, it hasn't, hadn't been used a whole lot in the past. It's been used more recently.
Oh, good, okay. Yeah, so, you know, we talked about all this. Allows that flexibility to meet, talk about fair and reasonable requests outside of the hearing. But it needs to be written and agreed upon, as, as are the special use conditions going forward media after the, the final hearing. So what's the difference between conditional zoning and special use permit zoning? They're, it's really just the decision-making process. You're getting, hopefully getting the same result and out of, out of that. And it's just, it's going into that final decision, you know, a lot of those discussions have already happened. It's just so hard to have that back and forth in such a short time period, you know, 20 minutes sometimes. I think that's how long this one lasted. And I guess you had a hearing before that, so you had some more time with it. But, you know, oftentimes we're making really important decisions affect, or decisions that affect that landowner or affect the neighbors, you know, for, for a while. So, so that's just a, another kind of plug, just to move towards conditional zoning, because you can kind of have some of those things discussed about. So I'm not going to walk through this slide. This just kind of spells out for you kind of the differences and the advantages there with the, the rezoning. Because often, it's the one-step process versus kind of, sometimes it's a two-step, right? Rezone it to business with a conditional use permit on the backend, and it just, it becomes weird. You've got to go from legislative decision, and then you're switching now to Board of Adjustment and, and that sort of thing.
So is it true on the disadvantages, they had to present a site plan survey, architect, rendering those on the conditional zoning district?
On the advantages?
I think some disadvantages.
Oh, right, yeah.
So how much freedom does the, does the county have in establishing what those submittals look like?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so your ordinance can help spell out some of that, too. So you could have some, some less stringent requirements on submission. So you have some flexibility there. Yeah, but, you know, it's, I think, I mean, honestly, I think the advantages outweigh the disadvantages here. So which way, that was the second, the, yeah, site plan survey.
Can be costly.
Yeah, I mean, it's, that's, as opposed to just a straight-up rezoning, right? Yeah, so if you're saying, well, every single automobile shop with junkyard nice to do a conditional zoning, that can feel like, well, you're just kind of singling out that type of, of business. Well, there's other, you know, retail establishments and others can, can come up with just a straight-up rezoning and not have to submit all that. But honestly, I mean, to build a, to build the site anyway, I mean, you're going to have to submit architectural plans and, and that sort of thing. But, you know, that's the whole idea with conditional zoning, is that, you know, you've come in with a specific type of proposal that you thought out versus just kind of the general rezoning, because I want to move into a business property. Does that get at it a little bit? Okay.
We'll talk about that when we discuss the UDO, that push and pull and the way we, we'll address that, or what I've, I'm, and the consultant in recommending how we address that in degrees of detail, so that the, to be sensitive to the investment of the ask.
Yeah, because it could, that public meeting could get carried away, where you've got, you're asking the applicant for too much, and
Yeah.
Doesn't feel like, you know, going against us, that, what the room is required. And then, you know, a couple days later, well, I know, we talked about that, but it's just going to be, I've done the numbers, it's going to be too expensive. So, you know, that's, that's some of those disadvantages, I think.
It's not hard, though, to, to define concept versus detail and concept plan versus a detailed plan, for instance, and how, how detailed we're going to be requiring. So I think we can, it'll be fun to talk about it when we get, when we look at the ordinance.
And, I mean, one of the things you could do, too, I mean, you could look at, like, just size of, you know, like, if it's over a certain acreage, well, it's going to be conditional district zoning. Where, but if you're doing a smaller type of business with a smaller impact, we'll just do a straight-up rezoning. So it's, you know, there's, there's different ways you can set it up in the, in the ordinance. And it's neat, because you guys, you know, you're going through this process right now, and hopefully be able to see, see that UDO. I know there's another committee working on that as well. But, you know, at some point, you'll have some input into, into that UDO.
You have 10 minutes.
Okay. Okay.
I'll take that one seriously.
This is, this is a lot on quasi judicial. So you guys do a lot of special use permits, right? So we've, we've talked about that. You've got to go through the, you know, it's necessary for public convenience, no substantial damage to neighboring property values, health and safety. It's got to be an allowed special use, right? Some, you know, it's got to be listed as, as that you can apply for special use for that type of impact. But, and, you know, the, still have to conform to the setbacks and whatnot. Still have to comply with a comprehensive plan. But adjust to those problematic uses. And I know you guys have, there's about 40 or 50 special use permits in the ordinance, something like that. There's quite, quite a few. But it does, you know, it does help deal with, with those. So here's another what-if question. So after filing a special use permit request, an applicant calls you at home to discuss the details of his request and advises you to visit the site. What do you do?
We had that one, too.
What do you?
That makes me cringe.
I know.
Temperatures, you remember?
I do.
Yep.
It was, it was a Facebook.
Oh, yeah, Facebook Messenger. Yeah. Oh, yeah.
A Facebook Messenger? Tell me more.
So a man out on, in the Williamsburg area asked for, I think it was, was it special use or, or rezoning? I think it was special use to increase the amount of.
It was definitely quasi judicial.
Yeah, yeah, to increase the amount of dogs that he had in his rescue. And
And he invited everybody out?
And, yeah.
It was the day after the hearing.
Yeah, we denied it.
Contacted us by Facebook and asked us to reconsider and presented the evidence.
Oh, so this is a little different scenario. So he, he wouldn't have to the decision and then tried to contact you.
Immediately, it was brought to his counsel's attention that that communication cannot occur.
Yeah, everybody said, everybody would raise their hand immediately to say, this is happening.
Yeah. Okay, so you recognize it. Yeah, good. All right. You guys are smart.
They are.
Well-trained.
Answer this, what is it?
Yeah, what, what would you do? Yeah, you guys answered.
Well, that, that came up afterwards.
Yeah, so what, what do you do if it happens before the hearing?
Oh, and a board hearing.
It's closed. I think like what James did by riding by Ellisboro Garden, taking a look for himself is perfectly fine. It's actually warranted. But I think if you're out there doing a visit and walking around with the applicant and chatting and talking, and it gets a little gray.
That's not coach.
It gets a little different.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a, that's a good kind of line. And then the other thing is like, what are the, was the public, if they, if they know you're a board member going down to look at a property, and they think, well, how do I know if you didn't meet with the applicant? Yeah, which makes, again, it comes back, it's just really difficult to get the information you need to make the decision in, in a fashion that feels like you've done your, your research. So.
And we're in a large geographical county, and so a lot of us quite have been familiar with the opposite side as we might be on the other side.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yeah, so you, you need to, yeah, you need to go and do that research. But yeah, if you're doing it on your own, you're not meeting with the applicant. You know, the other thing, too, is you could also have staff go out and get pictures and information. That's a, that's a better, probably a better way to gather information because of that perception, or potential perception of, of a decision-maker, you know, potentially meeting with the applicant. So, so the answer is really, no, you don't, don't visit the site, especially if it's been, you know, specifically requested by the applicant. So that would be the right answer to that question. Okay, I've got four minutes.
Roughly. I might give you a couple minutes, some more.
Okay, we've talked about this. I talked about not, not the, the use of hearsay and opinions. The evidence should be avoided. Witnesses must be sworn in. And then, you know, to John's point, you know, the board decides how much weight is given to the evidence. Is it hearsay? Is it factual? That's something you're going to, you're going to kind of think about as, as you go.
Which would apply differently with, as opposed to a legislative-type hearing.
Right.
It's going to be different, higher, higher, is a higher standard for evidence, of course, as you want to know for quasi judicial.
Right, yeah.
I think this is the most important reminder is just, is remembering what's relevant in a process and in the procedure, what's, and sticking to what's relevant and what's backed up by the land use plan or the ordinance. And that's where we, that's where we get, where we put that, no, it's not relevant.
Yeah.
But that.
That's where you have to tell me to stop asking questions.
Yeah. So, well, and you want to, you want to make sure you've got a good plan, so that, so that it can, you can ask the questions through the lens of the plan. That's, those are the questions that you are encouraged to ask and be.
Thank you, Carrie. That is a very good point. You have to, the questions have to be through the lens of the land use plan, not necessarily the lens that we would necess, that we might bring. Yeah, I, that's a very good point.
That's a way to separate the private agenda from a county-wide agenda.
Yeah, it's a good barometer. So this is just about kind of documenting a process. That's pretty straightforward. You guys did a ver, you know, we got to see it happen earlier tonight in terms of how the, the voting was, was done. Confiscation, oh, that's a long one. I won't make you do this one. It's too late for this, but.
Jesse, what was your opinion and David of the, the conversation, the back and forth with the special, during the special use permit?
Oh, yeah. No, I.
I'm curious to, just to hear your opinion about that after watching the.
Yeah, I mean, I think that was fine.
Proceeding.
Yeah.
Everybody was sworn in.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, you know, you don't have to, you know, respond to, well, obviously, you didn't have a lot of, you know, a lot of folks talking. But you don't necessarily have to respond immediately to what, what's offered. You know, you could just kind of sit there and, you know, don't feel like you have to answer that. That's kind of one thought. But that's not really about what happened tonight, but just in general. I mean, if it gets kind of where folks are asking you, you a specific question, James, what do you think? You know, you could just say, well, we'll, we'll talk about that when we deliberate after the hearings close, or something, something that says kind of, kind of deflects that a little bit. So, because that, you know, that's just, it's, it's hard. I mean, I, I don't have a lot of experience on your side of the table. I mean, I have a lot of experience on my staff side of providing information. So it's a little bit different viewpoint and sort of experience from my end.
So being relatively new to the planning board, one of the things that, for United Senate, and then before I was a planning board member, is that most of the comments, questions that you get or concerns are generally things that are on. you get are concerns, are generally things that are on zoning, special use permit related. And I think the biggest challenge that I had was that the public didn't understand that there's a whole other process that comes beyond just a zoning portion. But I think the vast majority of concerns that we have are the TRC type issues, traffic, water tables, you know, concerns.
Yeah, and that, you know, that's perfectly valid, you know. Like you said, I think someone said earlier, you know, maybe with that Duke hearing, it's just people want to come out and find out what the heck is going on, because it's not as always transparent, you know, with kind of what was in that application, what's going on. And so they're trying to educate themselves by coming out to the hearing.
We do hear that a lot, you know. I came here to find out what this is. When, they really don't have any testimony necessarily, but that will, that'll end up being an opinion. They'll give an opinion. But, yeah, that, but we do hear that.
Yeah, it's something, I mean, you know, as an interested citizen, you know, you're going to, you want to give the time of day. But, yeah, at some point, it's, depending on where that goes, it could be repetitive or feel like it's going along, like tonight's meeting. But, so, yeah, I mean, that's, I guess, an acknowledgement that you guys are, you know, in a tough position. But maybe that's a future planning board member, you know, you want to treat them with respect and like a fellow citizen, and, you know, hear them out as much as, as much as possible, because they're passionate about their community, too, just like you are, so.
A really good example of that here, with a citizen who was concerned about a zoning case who's now on our planning board. Call you out, but it's a perfect, it's a perfect, it actually, it's a way, it's supposed to work.
Right.
And I have to assume that you were treated fairly and respectfully, or you wouldn't want to be. Either that or just the opposite happened.
So, so, so lastly, I'll just say, there's a lot of resources out there to help support the job you're doing. Obviously, staff at the county is very important. You know, the more experienced board members that have been doing it for a while, you know, the ordinance, you know, spending time learning the ordinances of the UDO, that sort of thing. We have resources at the Piedmont Tribe Regional Council, if you need help with that. School of Government, they offer trainings, as well as the North Carolina American Planning Association. That, actually, I used a lot of the slides from their citizen planner training, so they have a great resource. It hadn't been updated in a while, but that's another resource for you. So I just wanted to leave you with that tonight, and then ask if you have any questions.
Yeah, my last one, you know, and my example there, I mean, how would you guys, you know, properly address that situation when you're getting the traffic concern, the things that are unzoning related to our decision?
Yeah, so someone being, I'm an authority on traffic, and this is too much traffic for the, for this type of development, that sort of stance, or just...
With the water tables, and the water table, we're not going to have, you know, our wells aren't going to produce 50 homes here.
Right, right. There are those concerns, right, yeah.
But it's actually beyond our scope.
Yeah, and I mean, really, you know, you don't want to say it in the hearing, but that's, you're not an expert on traffic, you're not an expert on, you know, hydrology, that sort of thing. So, again, you know, you take that for what it's worth, but, you know, you don't, can't really say, well, we're not going to hear those concerns, because those are valid concerns. And, you know, then your job as a decision-maker is, well, do we need to do some further study on that? Because there's resources at the county level, or ask the applicant to do some study or offer that up. So I think that's, that's the way I would deal with that question, is, well, what's the, you know, do we have any information from DOT on what this road can handle for traffic, the shoulder condition, those sorts of things? Just bring it back to, what's the reality here? If we don't have all the information, is there a place we can get more information? Is that a fair answer to that, Phillip?
Are there any more questions? Thank you so much for presenting to us. This has been very enlightening, and we really do appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Well, just give us, you got my information there.
Absolutely.
If you have any follow-up questions, you let me know or let Carrie know. Be happy to come back and talk with you, so appreciate it.
Awesome. Is there any under other business? Is there any old business? Is there any new business updates from the planning director?
Just the, at the end of Jesse's agenda, like he said, there is a mention for the UDO project timeline.
Okay.
October 5th, the consultant, the land use plan and UDO consultant will be presenting a, here's where we are till now, at a workshop before the Board of Commissioners' meeting at 4:00. And I would encourage you, I don't know about numbers, I have to be careful before saying, come on, come in, but try to at least watch that.
Okay.
Once, it's going to be a test, you know, like a, are we on the right track? And provided the results of that meeting, the next step would be then to share all of the documentation with you guys. The advisory groups done their thing, the commissioners would have said, we're on track. And then we'll start getting into it as a planning board. It'd be good for you to observe that, have the background.
Is there a way to comment if you're kind of virtual, you have to do it virtually? Is there a way to comment or be involved?
During that, at that point, I don't, no, that's more, that workshop is more of a engaging the advisory group with the commissioners and the consultant. And then we'll combat, we'll circle back to your, and any comments that you have, you have to write them down so that you come back to me with them later. It just gets too, it gets too complicated, it gets messy.
If there's no other business, do I have a motion to adjourn?
My motion.
Second, all approved. Meeting adjourned.